Hello.
Hello.
Be careful, Wendy. Be careful with my mic, please.
Welcome. All right, is this working? Can you hear me? Okay. Nobody leaves this room until I say so. Is that clear? We don't have crowds to our meeting. Okay? We are a small intimate group and we are honored to have you all here. We have no idea why you are here, but nevertheless. Okay? So, our decorum will be maintained and let's have an enjoyable time together. It's informational, many of it, and we look forward to hearing from a number of you. And we have a collective group today of listening ears. Okay? All right. Now, we will open this meeting officially. And we'll do so with the when we get it out here, the Pledge of Legions called to order. Let's do it in this order, okay? I have a couple of introductory comments that I will save until after we've had the roll call. And we'll start with that. This is Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Connors. Overwhelmed by this audience. Councilmember McCary.
Present.
Councilmember Moore. Mayor Pro Tem Horn.
Here.
And Mayor Hatch.
You're going to school again now, won't you now? You're like, okay, all right. We're all here and with that, we'll ask former Mayor Cynthia Connors to lead us all in the Pledge of Legions.
Veterans can render a hand salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that don't come to our meetings, which is all of you, I have a great deal of trouble operating this mic. Like some of you, I'm hard of hearing. So I don't know, I'm in trouble most of the time, but so bear with me and last year's mayor Cynthia Connors or next year's mayor will prod me when appropriate. Okay? All right, we come item now, presentations and ceremonial matters. There are a number of them here that I think you'll find interesting. Okay? Let us start with 4.1. It's the Community Bridge Builders' first anniversary. This has been agendized by Mayor Pro Tem Horn and Councilmember McCary. And our city clerk will read what the proclamation was all about and we'll have a couple of words from the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certificate of Commendation, City of Laguna Woods Community Bridge Builders' first anniversary. Whereas Community Bridge Builders was formed in May 2023 in response to rising hate incidents of antisemitism and the fatal shooting of the Taiwanese Presbyterian Church. And whereas Community Bridge Builders has purchased and shown anti-bias training materials and taught people how to speak up for themselves or others and not be a bystander without creating conflict. And whereas Community Bridge Builders has held programs bringing together diverse groups through fashion, food, music, and holiday festivities, learning and sharing cultural differences with others. Whereas Community Bridge Builders has created cards to express gratitude to others for the way someone made them feel. And whereas Community Bridge Builders brought the community together for one song with choruses sung in various languages like Hindi, Spanish, Korean, German, and Farsi, and the participants wearing the clothing representing their heritage. And whereas Community Bridge Builders has had a positive effect on the whole community and created a ripple effect to other clubs and activities throughout the community. And whereas Community Bridge Builders' role is to combat hate and prejudice through education, advocacy, and sharing of cultural experiences and personal stories of poems. Now therefore it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby commend Community Bridge Builders on the occasion of its first anniversary as well as its accomplishments and ongoing contributions to the Laguna Woods community, dated this 15th day of May, night 2024.
I am advised that there's no one here to accept this commendation. However, they're building bridges is what they're doing, all right? However, Sherry, you start and two of you tell us a little bit about this concept.
It's been a wonderful year, full of learning. Mike.
Thank you, Sherry, for sharing.
Thank you. Full of learning, new things, new cultures, new ideas. New we're creating all these new forms of videos on age, aging and ageism. It's such a dynamic group and I'm so proud of every single person there and they're all my family now, so I have nothing else to say about it, except it's the best thing that I do.
Thank you, and I echo those remarks as well. And I tell you, the whole idea of this club is just amazing. The work that has been done, the work that continues to be done and the leadership of this club is absolutely amazing. The president of this club, Rebecca Gilliard, has put her heart and soul into this club and it shows. It shows absolutely. I'm grateful for the city council's support. I'm grateful for all of the support that comes into making Community Bridge Builders really what it says it does is building bridges. Thank you.
Couple of things. First, I want to say that I am proud of this city council because the first time we met following the shooting at Geneva within weeks, Sherry had already gotten organized and had connected with Rebecca and she brought it to me and together, we motivated the city to begin this organization and to support it and to help sustain it. So I'm proud of us for taking that step. I also want to express my appreciation to Rebecca because she is such a treasure for this community and such a dynamo. And the third thing is, I just want to express why this club is so extraordinary because here in Laguna Woods, we have interest groups for every interest you can think of. We have clogging and square dancing and ballroom dancing and dog club and cat club. And everybody joins together with people who are like them. And the Bridge Builders is the one organization whose job it is to reach out between and among all of those groups, which are they are insular, they're welcoming, but the Bridge Builders does things that they plan to connect these groups together and to make us a stronger community. And so I think it's a real benefit for our city and our residents. So thank you.
Carol, is there an exclamation? Put an exclamation point on this.
Okay, I do want to acknowledge.
Turn your mic on, Carol.
Sorry, I have my problems too. I wanted to acknowledge, I think you also received another it's hard to see her, she's right. That podium is blocking. I think you received a special acknowledgement just recently too. Is that not correct? Yeah, right. So congratulations.
All right, just
Sit up straighter.
To all of you, are bridges important? What happened back in the East Coast? Without a bridge, there's no transportation for years probably across that. And so we here in the human side of things, those types of bridges are equally as important. Now, there is no one here to receive this, so Angie, we will look to you to get that to them and at this time, may we have a motion? Oh, is she? Oh, there you are. I'm also blind up here. Rebecca, come on up there and say a word, would you please? We have all afternoon.
Rebecca, you can sit.
No, it's fine, it's fine, it's fine.
And she was just honored.
This happened because I didn't bring enough members to the last event. So the board decided they had to do something about it, so.
I thought I was Sherry kicking you at the last meeting, but not so good.
Pearl thinks I'm a slave driver, but with my board. So I have the best board in all of Laguna Woods. People that really feel and think in terms of building bridges. And we have become a true family. We count on each other in the good times and unfortunately in the bad times, or fortunately in the bad times also. So I want to thank the council. I want to thank all the people that are here. But most of anybody else, my board, that whatever the idea is, they applaud it and they work hard to make it a reality. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right, now, yeah, we're now going to approve.
I move the proclamation.
Move the proclamation.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous? All right, we now turn. Is Rebecca up to it? Do you want?
Or we'll stand next to her.
Don't look upon it, Rebecca, as punishment.
He has the camera, so I have to ask.
Because we have a number of them and we'll do the photo op after they're all through, okay? Now, these were the Bridge Builders and now we have a proclamation celebrating Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We will ask Yoli to read that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, City of Laguna Woods, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, May 2024. Whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have played a critical role in the social, economic, and political development of the United States. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are one of the fastest growing ethnic populations in the state of California. Whereas Cantonese, Chinese, Indian, Iranian, Japanese, Korean, Taiwanese, and other Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders represent more than 20% of the population of Laguna Woods. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Clubs and Communities throughout Laguna Woods actively promote cultural heritage and understanding. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have a proud legacy of service and dedication to our community, state, and country. Now therefore it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim, May 2024, as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Laguna Woods and encourages reflection on the accomplishments that Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders have made throughout history, dated this 15th day of May 2024.
A second.
Second moved and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. You know, you stop and think about it for a minute, that even the village is and certainly Orange County to a greater degree and LA County where I raised my family.
Sir, I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, I'm sorry. Disregard everything I've said and we'll move along. All right. I was just saying that society we live in today is different than when we were all growing up, at least most of us here were growing up. Entirely different, isn't it? And there is a sense that for us to succeed and to be a part of something bigger than just our neighborhood even and so forth. So we now have appropriate to this group, we now have a resolution. There is no one here to say to accept this, probably because everybody was in the hospital, but this is Older Americans Month. Okay, and Yoli, would you read that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, City of Laguna Woods, Older Americans Month, May 2024. Whereas Laguna Woods is a unique community with an average age of 75. And whereas throughout their lives, the residents of Laguna Woods have made countless contributions and sacrifices to ensure a better life for future generations. And whereas the city of Laguna Woods recognizes recognizes that older adults are trailblazers, advocating for themselves, their peers, their communities, and paving the way for future generations. Whereas the city of Laguna Woods is committed to raising awareness about issues facing older adults and helping older adults to thrive in communities of their choice for as long as possible. Whereas our community can provide opportunities to enrich the lives of individuals of all ages by promoting and engaging in activity, wellness, and social involvement, emphasizing home and community-based services that support independent living, and ensuring that others can benefit from the contributions and experience of older adults. Now therefore it be it resolved that Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim, May 2024, as Older Americans Month in the city of Laguna Woods and encourages the recognition of older adults and the people who serve them as being powerful and vital to the fabric of our country, dated this 15th day of May 2024.
I think I hate to say this, I think probably a moment of silence is really what we need on this particular proclamation, but as I look out there and see most of you and as I look at my family and as I drive the streets of the village and we've lived here 20 some years now, about 25, 26 years in the village and we've grown old here. This is a remarkable village. It is a remarkable part of Orange County. And you are remarkable people, those of you that fit this category. And yet I have found in my ears that while the body may grow older, the spirit and the mind, I have found, have remained young. That there are new challenges out there. There are new opportunities that we can undertake. I think the Bridge Builders was something I've fallen in love with painting, oil paintings, so I have a new career in that. So we are a remarkable community. And society is, I guess we're all growing older in the United States now, aren't we? So may God bless all of us who are older that we may share the wisdom we've gained and the experiences we've had as you are doing with others. Thank you. Angie, let's go around. Go ahead.
Okay, I would like to speak to this. Yes, it's Older Americans Month and it was also Senior Rally Day in Sacramento that we do every year. And I cannot tell you, there is no more active, involved, and excited group than your senior legislatures. They're up there walking the halls and they pass a lot of laws that impact seniors specifically. By seniors, for seniors. More than a quarter of California will be senior by 2030, so the silver tsunami is well on its way. But being a senior today can mean a lot of different things. It doesn't necessarily mean old. You know, your first 40 years, from zero to 40, think of all the change that that encompasses. So from 50 to 90, think of all the changes there. And everybody, because of your life and your wealth and where you're located, ages at different rates and at different abilities. But old is something that you may lay upon yourself, but it's not a label that you have to take on. You're as able as you want to be and as you maintain. So being older has a lot of wisdom, a lot of experience to share. And it's vital now. It's, there's so much that older Americans are doing and senior Americans are doing. So I'd like to get away from the title of old, but it is Senior Americans Month and I congratulate all of us. Most of us are seniors, so and we all will be one day, so we all need to be thinking about each other.
Okay, everybody under 50, stand up. Okay, we've just covered that, okay? Very good.
Thank you.
All right, Carol, or anything else? All right.
I have no other comments.
Go ahead. She's younger than she looks. Go ahead.
When I first moved here, I was 59. And I felt like a young chick, you know, amongst all, everybody else. But now I'm the average age of Laguna Woods. And one of the things that I like about being here is that anytime something goes wrong with you, forgetting old, you look around and it's happening to everybody else. So there's comfort in that. But I think, I think the wealth of experience and knowledge that we have in this community from all of you who have lived rich, full, productive lives and brought all of that experience and wisdom to us makes us a really special place.
Well, actually I wanted to speak to two things. I want to go back to Asian American and Pacific Islanders because we didn't really spend much time on that one. And I want to say how much we have learned from other groups. I am now in the Tai Chi class, never had experienced that before, and I realize how much other groups bring to us their foods and their customs and so forth and how we all benefit. And I very much appreciate the contributions of the Asian and Pacific Islander in our community and of course in our country. Secondly, I did want to speak to, as a senior citizens' community, I want to tell you how proud I am of our community constantly. When I, just recently I had something, it was a necklace and I took it, went down to the jewelry club. And you realize all these people that are giving their time, involved in all kinds of clubs and how interesting they make our community. I love this community and I love the contributions that all of these people, us, you here and us, everything from learning someone else's culture, learning how to repair a necklace, learning Tai Chi, all of these contributions and it comes from our community. I bet you're as proud as I am. How many of you love this community and you're proud of it and speak to others? I can never say enough about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol.
We have that drowning.
I have to drift and think once in a while and images cross my mind and then they disappear and so forth.
We voted on that one already, didn't we?
No, no.
I move the proclamation for the Older Americans Month.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous? We now come to one representing a problem that has perhaps affected all of us in our lives with somebody dear to us. I can't say that for sure for all of us, but it is the drowning prevention awareness. And here to give us a little input after we read the proclamation is Captain Romo, one of the officers from the Orange County Fire Authority, who is in our district. And we'll have Captain come up in just a minute after we read the proclamation. And he can share with us what it's like. Yoli, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation, City of Laguna Woods, drowning prevention awareness period, May through August 2024. Whereas in the United States, an average of 3,500 to 4,000 people drown each year. And whereas drowning is the leading cause of death and disability in California for children under five years of age. And whereas for every child who dies from drowning, another seven receive emergency care for non-fatal submersion injuries. And whereas fatal and non-fatal drowning can be a silent event occurring in as little as two inches of water, including inflatable and built-in swimming pools, spas, bathtubs, buckets, the ocean, lakes, and anywhere else there is water. And whereas the themes of the Orange County Fire Authority's 2024 Water Safety Campaign are always watch the water and never swim alone. And whereas the Orange County Fire Fighters' ABCs of Water Safety program is intended to increase public awareness regarding proper procedures to prevent the needless tragedy of drowning. Now therefore it be it resolved that the Laguna Woods City Council does hereby proclaim, May through August 2024, as drowning awareness prevention period in the city of Laguna Woods and encourages all residents, businesses, and homeowners associations to become partners in preparedness by increasing their knowledge of proper safety measures in drowning prevention, dated this 15th day of May 2024.
Thank you. We have how many pools? Five pools in our community now? And some of them we have children in and some of them we have older people in. With that thought in mind, Captain, can you come up here and share with us your thoughts and the Fire Authority's thoughts on mounting? In fact, we had a bad experience not long ago.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and honorable council members. On behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority, I'd like to thank you for making today that proclamation. Orange County Fire Authority wants us to have a very fun summer, a good summer, but also to be aware when in and around water to make sure that we have a safe summer. Last year, the city of Laguna Woods had no drownings, however, there were 103 in the county. We want that number to be zero, of course, and there's no reason why it shouldn't be. A few quick things that I want to mention is what Yoli mentioned about the ABCs of being around water. A, making sure that there's an adult that's paying attention, having eyes on that child. A, making sure that there's an adult that's paying attention, having eyes on that child. And having eyes on that child doesn't mean you're on your phone and scrolling through social media or checking emails, making sure that you're paying attention to those children in that water. B, having those barriers, making sure those gates are locked, making sure those fences are closed. Don't prop them open for just making a quick run to the kitchen or inside the house and coming back. An unsupervised child can make their way into the pool area, and that's something we don't want. And the last would be C, which is classes. Get those kids into some swimming classes. That way they're aware of when they are in water, how to swim. But also remember, just by having swimming lessons doesn't mean that they're drown-proof, always keeping an eye on those children. And also C, we like to always just mention that CPR. So if we can, take those CPR classes, those first aid classes, and making sure that everybody is safe in case there is an emergency, you can step in. Once again, don't swim alone, and let's have a great and safe summer. Thank you.
Andy.
Yes.
Can you turn off the air conditioning?
I'm always cold, and then I have to go.
All right. Do you have anything?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead.
I don't have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
But thank you for mentioning the idea of swim lessons, not just for children, but for us as seniors living in this community. It's really, really valuable to have those swimming lessons, because even in the pool, sometimes there's five feet of water, sometimes more or less. And so it's really important for us as adults, whether we're watching children or not, to learn, to know how to swim, or at least to stay out of the water where you can't stand up. So thank you for bringing up the point about swim lessons.
Thank you.
All right.
Go with Councilmember McCary, sir.
Anything you need to counsel this group?
Actually, I had a question, and the question had to do with a hundred and three drownings. I wondered how many of those were in private pools and how many were? Do you have any demographics on that?
I may have those stats real quick here for you, ma'am. In pools, backyard pools were twenty-six, community pools were thirty-two.
Wow.
Others were from the bathtub, lake, ocean, in rivers and channels.
Those numbers, I thought those were county. Those weren't county numbers then?
Those are county numbers, yes, ma'am.
It's our county numbers?
Yes, ma'am.
That doesn't seem high to you, a hundred people in the county? It does to me.
Yes, ma'am.
I am really surprised at that. Are you? Yeah, still, wow, thank you.
Absolutely.
And the time, the time the Fire Authority gets the alarm because someone has called, sometimes you're too late, aren't you?
Yes, sir. So we're, we're going to respond anywhere from three to five minutes and try to be on scene. But you have to remember, when somebody's not breathing, three or five minutes is a very, very long time. So you have to also remember the delay of that person finding that individual who has, has drowned by the time they get out or try to do something with that person, and then call 911. There's a delay. By the time we get the call in our station, get into our apparatus and respond, get on scene. So there could be a, you know, a potential of anywhere from, you know, three or five-plus minutes of that, for that individual who's drowned. So, yeah, it's, it's important to activate 911 right away, but more importantly, enjoy the summer and just make sure that you're keeping an eye on those individuals who are in the pool that either can't swim or smaller, or just make sure that that adult supervision is there.
You know, this kind of maybe is a facetious question, but I'm on the Fire Authority Board.
Yes, sir.
Is being, knowing how to swim and having had training in swimming, is a requirement to become a fireman?
Uh, no, sir. We're not required to know or...
You're not?
Uh, yeah, be, be advocates, or good swimmers, but I would assume most of us know how.
Oh, anyway.
Never really thought about that, but no, yeah, that's not a requirement to be a firefighter, Orange County Fire.
One last question. What about the ages? What was the greatest number and what age group?
So the greatest age groups for last year were going to be from zero to four years old.
Okay.
Yes.
What percentage was that?
Uh, well, out of the hundred and three, that was thirty-five children that, yes, sir. I mean, yes, ma'am, sorry. Yeah, and then also, close behind him was the next age group was going to be sixty-five plus.
Really?
Yes, that was going to be...
Who is?
That was twenty-one individuals last year. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anything else I can answer?
Yeah, come back next year and give us some better...
I hope I can, sir. Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would love to give you, I'd love to give you zeros across the board on that.
Be nice.
Yeah, that'd be awesome.
Is it possible?
Absolutely. That is absolutely possible, yeah. It's just making sure that we are aware, and things like this, the proclamations and making sure that we educate the public in our communities and making sure that things like this don't happen.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Thanks, sir. All righty.
Again, we were going to take some pictures. All right, let's move that...
I'll move the proclamation.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Someone wanted, many of you are here for the next item. Is now a time to just break for a minute, move it on, and those of you who want to take pictures of some of these up to now, okay? We'll take, what, five-minute break?
Okay.
All right, let's do it. Now, who want, let's see, show of hands, how many wants to take a picture for any of these proclamations up to now? We do have bridge builders.
Do we know, did anyone come to represent any of these?
Start with community bridge builders, if that's...
Is there anyone for Asian American club? Were any of the clubs notified?
Okay, but we'll have the captain stay.
Bridge builders? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Wait. One more. Oh, Rebecca, one more, if you don't mind.
Smile, people, so we can, would you please?
Perfect, thank you.
Cheeseburger, cheeseburger.
We now are here for the presentation of an issue which is obviously important to all of us. It is the presentation regarding the Orange County Power Authority, the corporation. Joe Moska, the chief executive officer, is here to make a presentation. Just a couple of brief words. Joe, why don't you just sit down just for a minute? And you don't have to go all the way back, you can sit next to that gorgeous lady right there, okay? Anyway, Sherri Horn, our council member, is the pro-creator of this meeting. She felt it was important for us and for the residents to hear this presentation. It is a presentation that is, and Sherri will explain this more, it's informational only. There's no confrontations here, it's just information. Joe will have ten minutes to make his presentation. If any of you wish to make oral comments, you will have three minutes, and Yoli will signal when time is up for all. And certainly, council, we're not going, there's no action being taken. This is not an action item. This is simply an informational item. So Sherri, you were prompted to invite Joe here. Give us your thoughts.
Okay. The Orange County Power Authority is of interest. Renewable energy is of interest to a lot of our members. A lot of our residents have been interested for a long time, and I think anything that hundreds of our residents are interested in, we should be interested in. But like Noel said, this is informational only. This is for us to hear from our residents and from the Orange County Power Authority, but to hear from our residents and for us to ask questions of the Power Authority. Then, if there's enough interest on council, there'll be a town hall meeting where residents can ask questions of the Power Authority and get answers, and we can have a fuller give and take. Then, if there's still interest among council after that, then we can have a meeting to talk about joining it. So, no, no decisions will be made today, so expectations need to be lowered a little bit, but we definitely need to hear from you, because that's what it's all about, is doing the best thing for our residents and what they want. So I'm very pleased that Orange County Power Authority has come today to talk to us and explain about the program for the rest of the council. I and Councilmember McCary were lucky enough to hear a presentation already, but the rest of them haven't, and I'm interested to hear their thoughts, too. So without further ado, please, I'll open the floor to you.
May I press, ma'am?
I should tell you that Joe, at one time, was mayor of the city of Sierra Madre.
I was, yes.
And that's where my roots are, Pasadena, which is a next-door neighbor. So he has that going in his favor, okay?
Well, thank you, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for inviting us, and also Councilmember McCary for inviting us to come and speak today. Thank you to the entire city council and the city staff. My name is Joe Moska, CEO, CEO of Orange County Power Authority, and very happy to be here with you today for an initial conversation. As the Mayor Pro Tem said, this is just ten minutes, initial conversation about Orange County Power Authority. There's a lot more that I can share, but I have ten minutes to kind of share just initial information. So I have a presentation for you, and the slide here that is called Welcome to New Way of Powering Your Community, all right? Orange County Power Authority is a community choice aggregator. It is relatively new. We launched a couple of years ago, but the idea of community choice aggregation is not new in the state of California. Next slide. Couple, about twenty years ago, community choice aggregation was enabled by state legislation here in the state of California. California seeing it as a potent strategy in other parts of the country, namely the East Coast, they decided to give it a try here in the state of California. And so from one CCA up north, twenty years later, we have twenty-five throughout the state of California. So there are fourteen million people, Californians, that are benefiting from a community choice aggregator, two hundred communities that are part of these twenty-five CCAs. Orange County Power Authority is one of the newest kids on the block. Like I said, we launched our residential commercial service only a couple of years ago. This is, in fact, our second year in service. Next slide, please. So the benefits of community choice aggregation, as the slide says, competition. So for the first time ever, we, you have competition. You don't just have the utility, in this case, SCE, but you also have community choice aggregation. We are not-for-profit, meaning we are started by cities as a strategy for reducing greenhouse gases that are associated with the generation of, of electricity. We're not-for-profit, that is for the benefit of our customers, we're not-for-profit. We also have choice. You have choice for the first time ever. So those communities that belong to, as members of Orange County Power Authority, are giving their customers, their residents and their businesses, a choice for the first time ever, not just SCE. They can choose to purchase energy through SCE, or they can also choose to go with the community choice aggregation, Orange County Power Authority. Local control, which is a big item for, for cities, you're doing it your way. The type of power that you're putting onto the grid for your customers is something that you can choose. The programs that, that we adopt, Southern California Edison is quite large, well over five billion customers. Our CCA is able to be very nimble and tailor the programs specifically to the needs of this community and the communities that we represent. Job creation, local control of rates, reinvestment in our communities, again, we're not-for-profit, meaning that we're not, our, our revenue is not going to shareholders, it's going back to our customers, our residential customers, our business customers, and our municipal customers, helping them with the goals that they have, especially the sustainability goals. So if the city of, if the city has sustainability goals for microgrid technology, more electric vehicles, charging stations, we can help you with those goals by reinvesting our revenue from our CCA into your city. And again, we're putting more, more clean energy, more carbon-free electricity onto the grid, more than you would, we would be doing if it was just the utility. Next slide. And this is kind of how it works. And this is kind of how it works. So Orange County Power Authority is purchasing energy on behalf of our customers, just like the utility does, except we're purchasing more renewable energy at a faster rate than the utility is. The utility is still in place. They maintain and build all the poles and the wires. They also do all the customer service and the billing. So if you're an Orange County Power Authority customer, you're still getting a bill from SCE. There's just a line item on it that says "Generation, Orange County Power Authority." So this is essentially how it works. Next slide. We have four member agencies currently, Huntington Beach, Fullerton, Buena Park, and the city of Irvine. These are their enrollment plans that you can choose. The city can choose from the beginning what it wants its enrollment plan to be. In the case of Irvine, they chose to start off at 100%. In the case of Buena Park, they chose to start off at our 100% energy offering, Fullerton 72%, and Huntington 44%. That means that's where they start off, but customers have the choice of moving down to any of the other energy offerings or moving back to SCE. If they want to pay more money for the basic choice of SCE and get less renewable energy, they're welcome to go back to SCE. Next slide. In the short time that we've been in existence, here are some things that we're proud of, some milestones. We have 230,000 customer accounts, so we're not, we're not the size of SCE, which is good because we're able to tailor our programs, but we're also not the smallest kid on the block either. So we have economies of scale when we're purchasing energy on your behalf. Our basic choice energy, which I'm going to go over in a second, is 3% less as the equivalent generation rate than SCE. So we deliver more renewable energy at less of a cost. We're also, we just, within our first year, we purchased or initiated a brand-new clean energy generation facility for our customers. So one of the things that is in short supply right now in the state of California is clean energy generation, generation in general. So CCAs are the entities that are bringing on all the clean energy generation in the state of California. And here, in our first year, we're proving our value by bringing on new generation, and we've all, already had more contracts with our most recent long-term solicitation that has brought in three unique, long-term energy projects for our customers. Next slide. So here are our energy offerings. So in addition to the energy offering of SCE, which is less in terms of renewable energy, but costs more than our basic choice, you have the basic choice, which is currently at 44% renewable energy. That is state-qualified renewable energy, and it has less carbon emissions than SCE, and it's 3% less on the equivalent generation rate than SCE. The smart choice moving up is 72% renewable energy, again, qualified renewable energy, and it's a penny more per kilowatt hour. And the 100% is carbon-free, 100% renewable energy, and it's a penny and a half more per kilowatt hour. Next slide. Here's our mix of energy. This was in accordance with our last power content label, which shows that the 100%, what it has, it's essentially wind, solar, and some hydro, and the smart choice with wind, solar, and biomass, and then the basic choice has biomass, wind, and some other energy because it's not necessarily 100%. Next slide. Within one year, this is the impact of this program. 709 million pounds of carbon emissions were reduced through this renewable energy procurement. So when you look at the procurement, the portfolio as a whole, 96.5% renewable energy, and when you translate that into carbon reductions, it's 709 pounds. So that's the equivalent, taking 71,565 traditionally-powered vehicles off the road, or 12 million incandescent lights, changing those off to LED lights, or planting 5.3 million tree seedlings. So that's pretty significant. It's a game changer for region in the first year of service, and we're looking forward to having many more milestones and successes and letting you know about that. Next slide. In addition to our procurement successes, we've also had a lot of successes in terms of our finances. We have solid finances, financial planning. We are a very good steward of ratepayer dollars. In this last fiscal year, or the current fiscal year budget, our revenues are about $382 million, our expenses about $311 million. We're on target with our financial planning. One of the things that we're seeking to achieve is an S&amp;P credit rating in 2027, which would allow us to drive down the cost of energy, which is our largest line item. If we can drive down that cost, we can put more money in your pockets, put more money in the ratepayers' pockets, invest more in energy programs that will help us move toward a sustainable future. Next slide. So in addition to putting more renewable energy onto the grid, again, I mentioned reinvest in our communities. And so in our short time, this is, this is some things that we've done in terms of reinvesting. What we're looking forward to is building what's called a community power plan. That is really our roadmap of where we want to go with customer programs. And it's really an opportunity over the next several months to listen to our cities, which are our biggest customers, and the municipal customers, listen to our residents, listen to our businesses, listen to all of our stakeholders. What are the programs that are most helpful to you? How can we help you become more sustainable? So then we would basically put together a plan that is informed by stakeholders or letting us know about what types of programs would be most helpful to them. Then we'll be, we'll put together a plan that shows when we're going to achieve design and implementation of all those programs over the course of five, six, seven years. But these are other programs that we've already implemented in a short time of existence. We're also out in the, you can see the pictures of us out in the community, celebrating OCPA and letting folks know more about OCPA. Next slide, please. Here's some, just sample marketing of our own connected OCPA marketplace. The OCPA marketplace allows our customers to have access to significantly discounted energy efficiency products from lawn mowers to stove tops to a lot of different appliances that are significantly discounted. Om Connect allows our customers to put more money in their pocket by reducing energy at flex alert times, the most critical times on the grid. Next slide. And again, in our short-term existence, here are some awards that we've won locally. The one award that I'd point out and highlight is the one that I'm most proud of, by the U.S. Green Power Provider, by the National Renewable Energy Laboratory, I meant to say, which said that we are one of the largest providers of green power in the United States. Several other CCAs in California also on that list as well. And so it's really, it's really an important list. It shows that we are a game changer, and we are doing a lot for the environment, and also giving people an option for the first time ever in competitive, affordable rates. Last slide. We hope that this is an ongoing conversation, as the Mayor Pro-Tam has alluded to, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I'm just trying to think of how best to do this. If I open it to questions, let me see by a show of hands. How many have a question about the presentation, about what they are and so forth? Not whether you're pro or con, but just have a question that you feel you need. One, two.
Two.
All right. Why don't you sit down for a minute, Joe? Why don't the two, one of you come up and, do you want to come on up?
Some of us, some of us.
State your name for everybody.
I'm sorry, Sue Deering, and I live in Laguna Woods. Some of us in the community buy our energy through Arcadia and other sources of also renewable energy, and I just wondered how OCPA compares to that and what the difference is. I'm sure other people might be interested in knowing that. Thank you.
Thanks, Sue. Ma'am?
Well, maybe he should answer that one.
Fine.
Okay.
Go ahead.
In short, if you decided to join Orange County Power Authority, that would only mean that there's an additional option for customers. And so if any of your customers are in direct access, or they're getting energy in a different way other than through Southern California Edison, they can still purchase their energy through the way that they're getting it now. And if, if there's a specific provider, we would be happy to work with that customer to understand what the bill impact would be so that you have additional analysis, and you can compare. For instance, if the cost is the most important factor, you know, compare basic choice to what I'm receiving now. We would be happy to do that.
So is that okay? All right. Go ahead, ma'am.
Maybe more information you need.
I'm Vicky Johnson. Thank you, Mr. Moska. There were three, there were six entities initially were members of Orange County Power Authority.
Pardon me a second. Pardon me a second. Could you put the microphone closer to you? Thank you.
Yes. So initially, Lake Forest and Huntington Beach and, uh...
And what city are you from?
Okay. Several cities, oh, and the county of Orange, excuse me. There were six entities originally joining Orange County Power Authority.
Excuse me, can I, can I ask you which city you're from, please?
I live in Laguna Woods. I am a Laguna Woods resident.
Thank you.
Vicky Johnson.
Pardon me a second. I don't think we should interrupt people, even if they don't live here, because the presenter doesn't live here, so I think we shouldn't interrupt the people. Thank you.
Thank you, and I am one of your seniors. So there were six entities originally in Orange County Power Authority, the county of Orange, Irvine, Fullerton, Buena Park, Huntington Beach, and Lake Forest. But Lake Forest, and I would like to ask Mr. Moska why, Lake Forest pulled out before service began.
Is your question, why did some of these people leave?
Yes, why did three out of six of these member entities pull out since 2022, just in the last two years?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so there were originally five member agencies, and Lake Forest was, and I started about a year and a half ago with Orange County Power Authority. Lake Forest was an original, sorry, Lake Forest was an original signatory to the Joint Powers Authority that formed Orange County Power Authority. In the process of joining, there's, there's a need to pass an ordinance, and that ordinance has to be, as you know, has to be read on, read twice by your city council. They passed it the first time, they didn't pass it the second time. I'm not sure why Lake Forest decided not to join Orange County Power Authority. Huntington Beach was, is, a founding member of Orange County Power Authority. About when the last city council was elected to city council, they decided to shift gears and change direction, and they decided to leave Orange County Power Authority. Orange County Power Authority is as strong as it's ever been with or without Huntington Beach. We wish Huntington Beach would stay, but they are leaving. They're leaving as of June is their last month with us, and they'll be missed because a lot of their customers were getting options and more renewable energy, and we were reinvesting in their community. The county of Orange was never served by, it was a member at the table, it was never served by Orange County Power Authority, and it remains being served by Southern California Edison.
There you go. Any, only questions now, not arguments, or, go ahead. State your name, please.
Hello, thank you. My name is Mike Rao. I'm a resident of Laguna Woods. This is a procedural question.
All right.
Right now, you've invited people to ask questions, but you've also announced that there would be three minutes for presentations, and have you truncated that, or are you going to then move?
Not been truncated. This is simply that asking a question that is not clear in your minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
You'll have an opportunity. I see no one else with a question. Any on the council, starting with you, Angie? Any questions on the presentation?
I just wanted to, the CARE programs that are currently available, would that be something available through OCPA too? For the low-income people?
Good question, and I should have mentioned that. So CARE, FARA, any of the low-income programs, they're state programs or federal programs in some cases, and whether you get your energy through Orange County Power Authority or Southern California Edison, you still qualify for those programs. We, in fact, want to help sign up more people for CARE and FARA, and we could, that could be one program. It's actually a program that our board of directors is looking at. How can we stack on top of what is already accessible for our low-income customers, more dollars from our program? Because this is a moment where affordability is so incredibly important, so we want to make sure that we're helping folks that can afford, frankly, can afford their electric bills.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the medical equipment program too?
Yes. It is a state program, and so therefore, if you qualify for it today, your qualification won't change, and the fact that OCPA is an electric provider in the city would never change that.
Okay.
And you would, but you would get an additional, Orange County Power Authority being smaller and more responsive, you would get better customer service. We have an entire team that can help answer questions like that, call center, that can help answer those questions on behalf of your customers.
Thank you. And I just have one more question. People have been sending in questions, that if three people live in a row, how do they, they believe that if one person pays for 100% green energy, that every wire coming off of there, how would you differentiate this one that wanted basic, this one that wanted 100%? How would you do that to each different home that might want a different rate?
Good question, good question. And I think it's a question that people often ask. So even today, we do not, you cannot differentiate between electron and electron. Electron coming from fossil fuel or electron coming from renewable energy, they're indistinguishable. They are the same electron. So even today, Southern California Edison says that they're delivering you 33% renewable energy. There is no distinguishing between the natural gas electrons or the renewable energy 33% renewable energy electrons. What we are doing, and what Southern California Edison would be doing at 33%, is that we're purchasing more renewable energy for you. So the amount of energy that your customers would demand, we're displacing, you know, the fossil fuel, if you're asking for 100%, you individually, we're displacing the fossil fuels that would have been purchased on your behalf, and we're delivering that to the grid. The grid operator is the CAL ISO, California Independent System Operator. They have the responsibility for managing that grid and making sure the electrons are flowing through the system to people's homes and businesses. But what we are doing are, we're displacing the fossil fuels that are currently being put on the grid on your behalf, and putting on the grid renewable energy, and perhaps more renewable energy based on where you're at in that, those energy offerings. That is the same thing that exists today. No different, except that we are basically putting on the grid more renewable energy than the utility is doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any questions here? Okay? Thank you. Do you have a question? All right.
What I'd like to know is how they know that their energy is actually going on the grid? In April of this year, 800,000 megawatts of energy were curtailed or never made it to the grid. How do they know their energy is making it to the grid?
All right. So we have contracts with multiple energy developers and suppliers that have responsibilities, legal responsibilities for delivering energy to the grid. There's also the California Independent System Operator who's monitoring and managing the grid on a regular basis, and they are monitoring and understanding when energy is coming onto the grid and the needs of all of the users on that grid. We also have a whole team of folks that are scheduling our energy to go onto the grid. So we know when our energy suppliers are delivering, and when they're not delivering, we're also, our team is also interfacing with the California Independent System Operator to understand what is the need, what the need from our customers, and what is being delivered onto the grid. So there's multiple ways that we're understanding, not only from our own team, but also from Southern California Edison, who's also feeding data into our system to understand, are we meeting the needs of those customers? So there's multiple ways, but essentially, it's working with CAL ISO, who has the responsibility for managing the grid, and we're essentially, through contracting with energy suppliers, we're ensuring that those suppliers are delivering to the grid.
Thank you. All right. Okay. Now...
Any questions?
Is there anybody else that wants to put one of these and identify themselves and put it in?
I don't think they have to identify. Pardon me. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Carol.
By state law, I don't think people have to identify themselves. They can speak. I'm just going by law.
Walter Nobregum. Nobregum?
And just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, we're going to be enforcing the three minutes now?
Yes.
Okay. So staff will be timing, and we'll let you know when you reach the three minutes.
Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor. Good evening, or good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, city manager, city staff. My name is Walton Obrega. I'm a neighbor from Lake Forest. I don't live in Laguna Woods, but neither does Joe Mosca or Ayn Cration. So I'm here to counter this misinformation. Orange County Power Authority CEO Joe Mosca and Climate Action Campaign Agent Ayn Cration are making the statement that the OCPA's basic choice is 3% less than SCE's generation rate. The 3% statement is being made, hoping that Laguna Woods residents and others will be gullible enough to believe the bill will be reduced by 3%. The 3%, yeah. Their insinuation even turned into a talking point on the toolkit that was sent to Laguna Woods residents. The basic, and it states, "The basic choice product is 3% less expensive than SCE's." A bald-faced lie. In a court of law, if you were caught by a judge telling this lie, your credibility for all the testimony would be considered problematic. One OCPA board member from Huntington Beach even said, "You'd be saving 9% on your electric bill" when the OC was first forming. It was just misleading BS. This misleading deception could have Laguna Woods residents, I should make Laguna Woods residents irate. Don't be fooled and don't let Laguna Woods be dragged into this mess. Call the OCPA. Bad actors then, bad actors now. Another example of an egregious misleading statement that was specifically made by OCPA Board Member Tressida is that the OCPA businesses delivers 95.6%, delivers 96% renewable energy to all cities, residents, and businesses in the OCPA. The OCPA doesn't live, doesn't deliver one electron to anyone. The OCPA is a middleman that only purchases energy. KCO, the California Grid Operator, determines the mix of electrons going onto the grid. Year-to-date, that's only 34.3% renewable energy. And local utilities are the only ones who deliver that 34.3% to our homes and businesses. Either OCPA Board Member Tressida doesn't understand how electricity is delivered or like the 3% statement is intentionally trying to mislead the public. I think everyone has heard about the Assembly Bill 205, fee tax, the fee, fixed fee. The California Public Utilities Commission has made the decision to add a fixed fee to all utility bills. Everyone connected to the grid will be paying $24.15 a month with just a few exceptions. The CPUC has had in the past allowed utilities to put transmission and distribution maintenance costs as part of the kilowatt hour charge on your bill. That is happening now, what is happening now is that the-
Thank you, Mr. Nobrega.
I'm sorry.
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Mike, is it Rao?
Yes. Tell me when you start your timer.
Yes, sir.
Look, you're Magic Twanger. Rogi?
Just one second. Sorry. Go right ahead.
I'm Mike Rao. I live in Laguna Woods. I oppose entanglement of the city of Laguna Woods with OCPA. Look beyond their sales pitch to find out what they're really doing. I lived in Irvine when the Orange County Power Authority, OCPA, was hotly debated and the city council was divided about it and still is. OCPA is still a new venture, having started up in 2022. Yet despite their upbeat sales pitch, they have already lost half their customers. You must know by now that an OCPA customer gets exactly the same energy mix, yes, Edison provides to their neighbor, neither more nor less renewable energy. So what's going on? OCPA does not own electric generation facilities, no solar panel arrays or windmills. Like illustrated in their brochures, OCPA buys and sells electricity. They are small new company of traders, middlemen, claiming that they can save customers money in their electric bill while expanding the market for renewable energy. In Silicon Valley, what, they would be called a startup, a venture. And they would seek investors, banks, and venture capitalists to risk their money to invest in it. To win and retain support, the venture would have to reveal their business operations in full, submitting all along the way to audits and financial projections for accountability. There's always a risk and many ventures don't succeed. OCPA wants Laguna Woods to be an investor in their venture. OCP is a very small player in a, in a huge, huge electricity market, market of energy procurement. OCPA serves 230,000 customers, yes, that was it, compared to, I have 15 million Edison customers. OCPA's renewables contribution per paying customer cannot make much of a difference, like a bottle of Perrier water thrown into a swimming pool. So, so you poor customer, don't get your bottle delivered to you. Maybe a few electrons from OCPA. And the market is hardly expanded on your, on your behalf, if at all. They, to determine whether OCPA truly contributes to renewables liberty, they advertise, you would have to audit their books to find out about their trades. But they have blocked access to this information, even for member organizations. Irvine and Huntington Beach are examples. They block them. The city of Laguna Woods should not act like venture capitalists, thrusting us into the risk of entanglement with a glib and brassy startup whose real objectives we don't really know. But we do know that this new venture has already lost half their customers. Why rope us into a risk like that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rao. Vicky Johnson.
Hello, I'm Vicky Johnson, Laguna resident. Mayor, city council members. There are financial risks to joining Orange County Power Authority, to joining, to withdrawing, bankruptcy, and OCPA's use of customer money. OCPA has only three audited annual financial reports. OCPA makes no guarantee that their rates will be lower than Edison. That's a big risk because when a city joins OCPA, everyone is opted in by default. Our entire city will be affected, businesses too. In Irvine, OCPA is so unpopular and costly that 30% have opted out. What if OCPA charges Laguna Woods more than Southern California Edison? And complaints here arise to the point Laguna Woods wants to withdraw. Please be careful. The exit terms are punitive. Orange County Power's latest financial report states that 1 million was owed by the county of Orange when they withdrew. 1 million, they never even got service. Their own financial report states that initially Huntington Beach owed them 7 million for withdrawing. The liabilities can involve hundreds of billions, can involve millions of dollars of complicated power contracts and resource adequacy. A Riverside CCA went bankrupt in 2021 and their customers were liable for millions. What is OCPA doing with its revenue? Now, Mr. Mosca just said they're headed towards 110 million in reserves in two years. For 230,000 customers, that works out to about $500 per customer. 110 million that they're retaining. Why is OCPA keeping this money rather than lowering their rates? It's a not-for-profit. And for all these risks, OCPA delivers nothing to your home. An OCPA customer will get the same old Southern California Edison electricity. The energy OCPA advertises is not directly delivered to your home. No, not directly delivered. What they buy goes somewhere into the huge grid. And OCPA redacts the information to evaluate what it buys and sells. This lack of transparency is well documented in audits by the state and member cities. What are they hiding? To join OCPA with its troubled track record of only two years would be complex and financially risky. We rely on you to exercise due diligence and perform your fiduciary duty to protect us by careful study. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Johnson. Michelle.
Mayor and members of the Laguna Woods City Council, my name is Michelle Johnson. I am a resident of Irvine. I'm here to recommend against joining the OCPA. OCPA started with three promises to their member cities. Number one, offer choice through local government control over energy procurement. But OCPA has never hired a power resources director since inception. Over $1.4 billion in energy contracts have been negotiated and signed by a consulting firm, PEA, in Folsom, California. PEA is purchasing power from Edison, PG&E, Morgan Stanley, Sunrise Power in Texas, Exelon in Maryland, TransAlta and Nectar in Canada, and Marsh Landing in New Jersey, among others. This is not the choice or local control ratepayers were promised. Number two, provide an organization led by professionals to serve the community and create local jobs. OCPA continues to be an organization run largely by paid consultants who are headquartered outside of Southern California and the state. Outsource jobs include power supply and procurement, general accounting, marketing, legal, resource adequacy, public relations, and their customer call center is in Texas. OCPA's sole investment was to a developer to build a solar farm in Riverside County, costing $330 million over 20 years and was approved by their board in under 15 seconds without discussion or questions. Number three, provide affordable competitive rates to deliver green energy. OCPA has never provided competitive pricing versus SCE. The city of Irvine pays over $1 million more in annual municipal electricity costs. As far as delivering green energy, I'll simply tell you how their consultant, PEA, described it at a board meeting. Quote, "Think of the grid as a big swimming pool. Generators fill the pool, users draw from the pool. Electrons in the pool are indistinguishable from one another," unquote. OCPA refuses to provide the detail behind their power content label. It's like a nutrition label with just the percentages and absolutely zero detail behind exactly what you're paying for. OCPA is providing the same energy as SCE, deceiving ratepayers and charging premium rates for a product they are not delivering. The city of Laguna Woods should not join the still troubled OCPA. They have lost 50% of their member city base since inception. The financial effects of Huntington Beach's exit on July 1 are still unknown. Council members must exercise their fiduciary duty to independently evaluate risks and liabilities to their residents, including an independent legal review of the Joint Powers Authority agreement. Did you know the JPA allocates, quote, "To the greatest extent possible," unquote, "the liabilities to the ratepayers"? Why not wait until they prove themselves, repay their loan to the city of Irvine of $7.6 million, and achieve their investment-grade rating that their CFO status is only two years away? Thank you.
Thank you. Thomas Castro.
Good afternoon, council and Mr. Mayor. My name is Tomás Castro. I'm an advocate with Climate Action Campaign. We're a local climate nonprofit here in Orange County. But before I joined CAC, I was an advocate for many years for community choice energy in my hometown of Irvine. Community choice energy is any city's fastest path to restore local control over where the city gets its power. And the process takes significant action on climate by opting for renewable sources such as wind and solar. Unlike investor-owned utilities such as SoCal Edison, OCPA does not have a profit motive. And revenues could be reinvested back into Laguna Woods in ways that will benefit the community rather than shareholders. Joining OCPA would also deliver rate relief to residents. The agency's basic choice product is already 3% less expensive than that of SoCal Edison's, which is only projected to increase rates as they have every year for nearly a century. In fact, 12 of 13 SCE programs in Southern California offer rates lower than that of their comparable utility company, including OCPA. Today, 25 CCAs serve more than 11 million customers across 200 towns, cities, and counties in California. Laguna Woods could be one of them. Thank you again for agendizing this vital first step towards community choice energy today. I urge you to think about the benefits that this program would provide residents here in Laguna Woods. Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas. Harvey List. Harvey, are you here?
Should I begin? I'm Harvey List, a longtime Irvine resident and former planning commissioner as well. I enrolled in Southern California's 100% renewable option called Green Rate a few years ago. So I'll use my April electric bill as an example. OCPA's website has a tool that compares their basic choice plan rates with Southern California Edison's default rates. My SCE bill first chose a charge of $182 as if I did not subscribe to their 100% renewables option. Yes, SCE offered 100% renewables. When I, when I input my electricity usage for my bill into OCPA's tool, it computes SCE's charge as $183, probably rounding error. And it computes for OCPA's basic choice, a charge of $181, a great big $2 saving or a little more than 1% compared to SCE's. What happened to this 3% you've been hearing about? But why only 1% plus when OCPA claims on their website that OCPA's basic choice plan costs 3% less than SCE, which would make it a saving of about $5.50? Well, OCPA's charge is actually only 3% cheaper for generation, as what Mr. Mosca's slideshow actually did show, which is only 40% of the bill. SCE provides the transmission. So the actual percent saving of the whole bill with OCPA's basic choice plan over SCE's default rates is only 1.2%, which is a $2 monthly difference we got. Big deal. You can call this 3% savings claim either misleading or an outright lie. But the city of Irvine automatically opted every Irvine ratepayer into OCPA's 100% renewable choice plan. And now at least 30% of Irvine's ratepayers have opted out of OCPA. Why? Well, the OCPA 100% renewable choice rate for my usage, according to their website, would be, that is, according to OCPA's website, would be $188 or a premium of $7 or 4%. While SCE gives me for their 100% renewable green rate, a net credit of $32, an 18% discount for Southern California Edison's 100% renewables. So that's why OCPA does not show any comparisons for their 100% renewables option. SCE's website declares that renewable energy is cheaper than fossil fuel energy, which my bill shows clearly. So why is OCPA charging more for renewable energy? Good question. Now, to get on, SCE's renewable energy requires being put on a waiting list. Since SCE says they cannot immediately purchase more renewable energy now, so how does OCPA do it? Or do they do it? They won't release their purchase agreement, so it's unknown. However, by state law, SCE's renewable energy purchases must be certified by a nonprofit organization, Green E. Energy. But community choice aggregators like OCPA are exempt from that certification. So they can lie, say anything they want. Since everyone gets the same electricity, since everyone uses the same wires, where does your money actually go when you select 100% renewables? For an answer, I recommend-
Thank you, Mr. List. Your time is up.
Jim Phillips Videos, yes. Go to Jim Phillips, Jim Phillips Videos. He explains it all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ann Gressium.
Good afternoon, council members and staff. My name is Ayn Cration. I'm with Climate Action Campaign. We're a nonprofit climate policy watchdog. We provide expert testimony to the California Air Resources Board, to the California Public Utilities Commission and other bodies that make energy policy in the state. Climate Action Campaign worked for five years to establish what is now the Orange County Power Authority. It's Orange County's first community choice energy program. I got involved in 2018 as a volunteer along with many professors at UC Irvine because it is the fastest way to bring clean energy to a community and to accelerate climate action. And that's a priority for me, just as a mom and someone who cares about the future of our, of our planet. And there's an abundance of research demonstrating the benefits of community choice energy for, for our climate. It's also the only tool available under California law to bring freedom of choice to energy users in a community. And it's easy to forget because it's been this way for so long. But it's worth reminding ourselves that SoCal Edison is a monopoly. It's an investor-owned utility. Its main purpose is to deliver shareholder dividends to its stocks. purpose is to deliver shareholder dividends to its stockholders. And it's also important to remind ourselves that every month since Laguna Woods was established, which I think was 1964, so 60 years now, that Laguna Woods residents have been mailing checks, or maybe they're paying online, to SoCal Edison. So if we do the math, how much money has Laguna Woods sent to SoCal Edison? I did this math. Laguna Woods has around 12,000 households, right? So if you multiply that times 60 years, multiply that times 12 months a year, you see that Laguna Woods residents have sent around 8.6 billion, with a B, monthly payments to SoCal Edison. If those payments were $70 each, which was the average in 1995, then Laguna Woods residents have sent more than $600 billion to SoCal Edison. So what does Laguna Woods have to show for all that? Has SoCal Edison used the $600 billion to buy even $1 billion worth of solar panels for all the homes here in Laguna Woods so that you could have a zero monthly bill? I don't think that they have. I do have solar panels on my house, and so I do have a zero bill every month, or it's a credit often. Have they at least put a down payment on those solar panels for your community? I don't think they have. And so that's why Laguna Woods residents are still paying some of the highest electric rates in the United States. So what does SoCal Edison do with all that money? Well, they use it to lobby the governor. They use it to lobby the CPUC commissioners. They use it to lobby our state representatives to keep the system in place, to ensure that they'll keep that money flowing until the end of time. Investor-owned utilities donate more money to state legislators than almost any other special interest in California. SoCal Edison was the lead advocate of the utility tax that we saw passed just last week that will add $24 a month-
Thank you, Ms. Cration. Your time's up.
Thank you, to resident bills. So thank you for considering this change.
Thank you very much, Ann. Mary Sinclair.
Good afternoon. It's good to be here. I'm Mary Sinclair. I live here in Laguna Woods Village, and I'm here with a number of others. And-
Can you move the microphone higher?
How's that?
You know, just-
Maybe just holding it. Could you hold it?
There we go.
Stand there, Mary.
Is that good? Go ahead. Thanks. Okay.
That's not run by electricity, by the way, that mic.
That's how I yell. So I'm a member of Concerned Citizens, and I'm chair of the Environment Committee there. And we just hosted a very well-received Earth Day, and the overall theme of Earth Day this year was sustainability. Sustainability for each of us, especially sustainability for the village as a community. So the question is, for all the exhibitors who came, you know, what are the resources and the collaborations that we can develop in order to make good choices now to sustain us when things are going to get even tougher? So that was our goal. And the third, my pocketbook, the village, and then the third aspect would be the sustainability of the earth. This is why we're in such a pickle now. It's getting more and more expensive because the climate crisis is costing us more and more. So we're seeing that in a whole lot of ways. So far, the, excuse me, I'm from Oklahoma. The Orange County Power Authority is sounding to me like a really wise investment of our time, at least exploration, looking into it. I can tell there's a lot of digging in that needs to happen, but what I do know is this path is not sustainable with our power. We just can't keep going this direction. It is going to get higher, and we do want to look at alternatives. And as a citizen, I would be more than happy to take what I see as a small risk for a big difference down the road for sustainability at both levels. I really think that this is a rare opportunity. There's so much in my bank account I can't control, but this is something I can control by investing in this opportunity and, you know, supporting sustainability at both levels. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Jonathan Adler. Jonathan, I didn't recognize you as a man. Come in. Now, Jonathan.
Sir?
You've got three minutes now.
Thank you. Let me look. Jonathan Adler, Laguna Woods resident. Let me devote the first 20 seconds to an appreciation of you, Mr. Mayor. Been watching the development of your sharp wit over the years. I didn't realize that you were rehearsing for a new career as a stand-up after your public service, but I really appreciate it.
Just used a minute and a half, Jonathan. All right, now go ahead.
Well, so I've been watching the renewable energy scene for a long time. Some of my own investable assets, a large percentage is in a company that provides renewable. I would personally appreciate the opportunity, whether it costs 3% less or 3% more, to devote some, excuse me, of my electrons to renewables. I'm reminded that I've been following, I'm a legislative nerd. I'm co-chair of the Legislation Committee of the Democratic Party of Orange County. Been watching a bill that Dave Minn put in to require investor-owned utilities to not pass on those costs or advertising costs to ratepayers. It got sabotaged three weeks ago in the Energy Utilities and Communications Committee of the State Senate. It was ganged up on by investor-owned utilities. So they tied it up, and it failed on a tie vote. We have received presentations in the Democratic Club and Concerned Citizens, very interesting one. I'd like to find out more. I'm looking forward to the rigorous response to the negativity that I've heard. I didn't get any talking points in my email, so I can't respond to anything, but it is time really to engage those issues and to really provide the opportunity, I think, for choice that I think that our village would appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan. That's it? Is there anybody else out there now that would like to take a minute, two minutes, up to three, and express their opinion? Thank you all for coming. Sherry, you had a comment?
I would like to hear Mr. Mosca respond to some of the comments that were made.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute. We're not doing that, I thought, right now. We were just letting everybody unload so that we can gather together our information and discuss about the next step. Am I incorrect on that?
That's the way I thought it was.
I don't know. It's informational, and this is the Power Authority, and specific charges were levied against them, and I would like to hear their response.
But I guess I have a question. I thought it wasn't a town hall. I thought it was informational. So if you have a question, I think that we should get all the questions we want. I want to thank everyone for taking the time and coming to express your opinion because the only way you learn anything is to hear other people speak, but I did think that this was a, it's not a town hall. So I think we have to-
We are not debating back and forth-
We're not debating, so I-
Justifying-
Yeah, I thought we-
Contrary opinions. We're not supporting the others.
No, but I would like, as a council member, I would like the information from the Power Authority. It's not a back and forth, but we are allowed to ask questions, and I would like to know how he'd respond to that. How am I supposed to deliberate if I can't hear a response?
Yeah, I mean, this is a discussion item that is a receive and file. If you'd like to have more back and forth, it's up to the council if they want to do that. It really was intended, though, as just a presentation. These are typically sort of shorter items before you get to the business of your meeting. So ultimately, it's up to the mayor and the council if they'd like to continue the back and forth.
If you would like to make a motion that we require Mr. Mosca to come in and respond, if he so chooses to do, if he feels it necessary, then we'll put that motion to the council.
I'm confused, Mr. Mayor. I'm really confused. I try very hard to follow Robert's rules, and it's, a lot of stuff has just gotten jingles here, so I'm confused as to what we're doing here. I thought we were having a discussion, and there's been some weaving back and forth. So I'm really confused on where we are right now, and for some clarity, I would really appreciate it because I don't know.
All right.
I have no objection to hearing again from Mr. Mosca.
Mr. Mosca, what is your pleasure on that? There's been a lot of arguments. I'll turn the mic over here.
So I know that you have business of the city to get on to. I'd be happy to come back with even our team and have a town hall to the next step, the next level with the city where we can basically sit down, have a little bit more time, answer any questions that you have, answer questions, take questions again from the public. But if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have.
You have been taking notes, I'm sure, and you've heard this before. You've heard most of these arguments before.
Yes, yes. There's a lot of confusion. The energy sector in California is very complex, and there's, you know, so it's reasonable that people get some things misunderstood. You know, for instance, the Green Rate Program. There's a gentleman that mentioned the Green Rate Program that SCE has. The Green Rate Program is closed. It has been closed, and so you can't, you don't have access to 100% renewable energy from SCE. You only have access to 100% renewable energy from OCPA. And in terms of the discount, we said the discount is as to the equivalent generation rate. There's a whole other side of the bill, which is the delivery side, and so SCE goes up on their delivery rates several times a year, and the fixed charge is on that side of the bill. And so that's going to continue to go up, but the only thing we can affect for the city of Laguna Woods is the generation side. So as to the generation side, we are 3% less. We have-
All right, let me interrupt you. You have just solidified my thinking that now would be an inappropriate time to have a dialogue back and forth on these-
We would be open to it.
And that gives you time to sit and quietly prepare to answer a number of questions which have been raised.
Right, absolutely.
That's fair to you, okay?
I wonder, too, if people want, if you have some questions, maybe we should have more understanding of actually how electricity is transmitted. I think there are a lot of questions here, and I would encourage everyone to put those questions together, and let's understand it more. This is a complex topic, and I think you gave 10 minutes towards it. It doesn't really cover it. We had, we heard a lot of information from people, but I think it's more complex.
Go back and sit. And we will have a town hall where these questions can be addressed. Does that help, Nancy?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for commenting.
To all of you.
All of you. All right. Thank you, Jonathan. That is the shortest talk you have ever given, and I am so proud of you. I really am. All right. We are now in the, you can all go home now.
Just trying to get your attention.
Yes. Well, you don't need to. You've made all the comments you need. Let's tell you, we'll take a five-minute break so everybody can chat.
Okay, so we'll do the town hall.
You have, that means you have to stay for the entire meeting?
Going to.
Okay. All right. We're on item five. Listen, thank you, counsel. You were, you were really very good today. I appreciate it, there. Item five, are there any public comments on non-agenda items?
Yes.
Let's see. We have Bill Kaufman on the Wellness Center. Bill?
Oh, this is Bill Walsh.
Well, there's another Bill, but you're here and he's not.
Oh, okay. My questions are informational. First of all, I attended the meeting when Caltrans came here, and those folks came about what they're going to do with the interchange at El Toro. And I haven't, and it's my own fault, because I haven't, I don't delve into this stuff in my private time. I don't know what the status of that project is, how soon they think they're going to be finished with it, and whether they're still in their plan or going to take the southbound exit to El Toro and run a portion of it on a, over the top of the freeway and drop it down onto Rockfield. I don't know if that's still in their plan.
Is this Bill Walsh?
Yeah.
Hi, Bill. The city manager and I were talking about this just the other day. What can you share by way of what you've heard?
Sorry, I caught the tail end of that, but I assume we're talking about the Interstate 5, El Toro Road.
Yes, we are.
Interchange project. It remains an active project for both Caltrans and OCTA. We and the other cities that are involved in the project area meet with both parties on a regular basis. We had a meeting actually on Monday, specific to the traffic study that seeks to identify the need for the project.
Okay.
It is many moons from being even designed. It's at a very, I wouldn't say conceptual level, because they are still evaluating individual alternatives, but there's no immediacy to the project at all. But all three cities, Lake Forest, Laguna Hills, and Laguna Woods, remain involved to share our, you know, perspectives on the project. If you go on our website, there's a page devoted to the project.
Okay.
That has the letters that we've sent to Caltrans, has an option for you to sign up to receive updates on the project directly from OCTA and Caltrans. But I'd be happy to talk to you offline as well about whatever the specific concerns are.
I was just, I was just curious if in my lifetime they're going to finish it, but that's a whole nother.
There's still, there's still several.
I'm assuming I would live another 20 years, but.
There's still several years out from even selecting a project.
Right.
And then it has to go into design, and then obviously, because this is like a half-billion-dollar project, so there's a whole funding piece of it. It's not happening anytime in the near future.
Okay. And as an adjunct to that, am I going to live long enough to see the mall built? Has anybody from Laguna Hills?
I'm going to defer you to Laguna Hills on that. I have no.
The planning department?
I have no information on that one, but I know that it's entitled, meaning planning permits have been issued, but beyond that, that's a Laguna Hills question.
I mean, I see mountains of recycled concrete sitting out there, but I don't, don't see a lot of movement. Okay, well, thank you. It's.
Thank you for inquiring.
I'll come back in a couple of years and ask how it's going, okay?
Yeah. Keep, keep doing your push-ups. All right. All right, so there is no Bill Kaufman then? All right. We'll move on then now to the, one of my favorite parts of the agenda, the City Treasurer's Report, because she is doing so many good things. So Liz.
Good afternoon.
You want, you have two, two items now?
Yes, two items. The first item is the City Treasurer's Report as of April 30th. The city's total assets were $13,889,426, which the general fund ended with just over 10.5 million, and the special revenue funds ended with 3.3 million. Assets broken down as of April 30th with cash and cash equivalents of $908,669. The pooled money investment accounts consisted of LEF of $812,894, and this OSIP account, just over 6.8 million, totaling 7.6 million. Investments consist of certificates of deposits of 5.3 million, which totals assets of 13.8 million. During the month of April, we had one CD mature with principal amount of $245,000, and there were no new purchases. At the beginning of the month of April, we had a transfer of $300,000 from the OSIP account to the checking account for cash flow purposes, and the same amount was transferred back to the OSIP account at the end of the month. The city's trust funds as of April consist of the other post-employment benefits trust account of $133,458, with a net loss of $4,857, and the pension liability trust account ended at $162,762, with a net loss of $5,454.
Two items on the agenda. They're agendized separately, so I think at this point, we can take any questions on the monthly report and any public comments on the monthly report, and then Liz will transition into the quarterly report.
All right. Any questions of Liz on that? You don't need, we can approve the report on both of them at the same time, or do you want them?
I would vote on them separately, just since they're separate items.
All right. All right, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Approved. Now let's go to the second report, the one that has footnotes, all kinds of fascinating footnotes. All right, go ahead.
Yes, so the quarterly financial report has been provided to city council in prior quarters for several years now, but this is the first time that we are going to be presenting at a city council meeting, and it will be presented at city council thereafter on a quarterly basis. The first quarterly financial report is as of March 31st, 2024. And as of March 31st, the general fund ended with revenues of 4.3 million, expenditures of 5.2 million, a transfer out to the capital projects fund of $608,250, with a fund balance, ending with a fund balance of 8.8 million. I would like to point out that the property tax and sales tax revenues are the city's largest source of revenue. Sales tax is paid on a monthly basis, but it is two months in a rear. For property taxes, there are two substantial payments received throughout the year in January and May. For sales tax revenue received as of March 31st, there was $710,325, and total property tax revenue as of March 31st was $1,754,911. The second substantial payment of property tax revenue was received in May, and that totaled to be 1.5 million. Expenditures in the general fund are as expected and in line with the budget. Moving on to the special revenue funds, revenues ended in, as of March 31st, at 1.5 million, expenditures at 1.8 million, and the fund balance ended at 1.6 million. We are still expecting monies from reimbursable grants to record in the special revenue funds, and we have yet to recognize unearned revenue on certain grants at the end of the fiscal year when all expenditures are incurred. I would like to point out that the senior mobility fund is above budget in expenditures due to the increased demand in the new taxi program offered by the city. However, a budget adjustment increasing expenditure appropriations was approved by city council in April, so it should be aligned by the end of the year. Capital projects fund revenues at March 31st had $12,937, and it all consists of interest income. Expenditures ended at $137,561. There was a transfer in from the general fund of $608,250, and ended with a fund balance at $1,500, I'm sorry, $1,052,278,000. One more thing I would like to point out is interest income received as of March 31st for all funds was $373,920. And expenditures for all funds are expected and in line with the budget as of March 31st, with the exception of the senior mobility fund, but that had an appropriation approved in April.
I'll just add some additional thoughts to the mayor's comments initially about the footnotes. What most of those seek to explain is that if you look at the individual funds and you look at revenue as a percentage of the year versus the percentage of the year that's actually elapsed, they often lag behind.
Yeah.
And they often lag behind. And a lot of that is because we don't receive revenue in even monthly installments. Our largest source of revenue is property tax. Property tax comes, just like we pay our own property tax twice a year, the city gets two large payments of property tax, one earlier in the year, one later in the year, but it causes at various points in the year our budget to look like we are spending more than we're taking in. The nice thing about the city's revenue is it's predictable.
Yeah.
And so that revenue is, you know, known to us. We know we're going to receive it. But just like some of these grants that are footnoted that we're spending in advance of receiving reimbursement, it's the same general concept with most of our funds, that it all evens out by the end of the fiscal year. But it is, governmental accounting is very fundamentally different than private sector or enterprise fund accounting, where like a profit and loss sheet would balance out at the end of every month. So, anyway.
Carol?
I had a quick one. When I look at, I was thinking the opposite. I wasn't thinking, I looked, this is one quarter, although that's, when I look at, for example, the property tax, that's, if your budget is 3,297, it looks to me like you'll be over that. And I looked at the others, it looks to me, if that's one quarter, it looks actually better to me.
Well, so the, yeah, so the, the numbers to look at on this chart, so if you, if you go to the first page, fourth line down from the top, it shows that 75% of the year has elapsed. If you look then at property tax.
Oh, I forget we're on the, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a calendar year, right. So you're looking at 75% of the year elapsed, but only 53% of property tax has been received. But like Liz just mentioned, this report runs through March. In May, we received an additional 1.5 million. So this isn't, nothing on this report is actually unusual or unexpected for us. There's a couple of things, like Liz mentioned, that interest is performing a little better than we had budgeted, but it all falls in line. Those footnotes at the end are just very important to add some context to the kind of known and intentional unevenness of revenue versus expenditures for government.
The, the property tax is up, and the interest, I did notice those, too. Thank you.
Any other questions before I ask mine? Okay. The, the two big, you've explained one of the big issues, and that's the property tax, which I think explains very well, that we know that's coming, even though the state may be bankrupt, why it's still, we've got our property tax. But the, we've budgeted a million two for sales tax, which is our other biggie. It's 59%. We've received $710,000 on that one. Note two, which isn't entirely clear to me, which says that includes July through January revenue. February revenue was received in April, and the reason that's not here is because March 31st was the cutoff date, and we didn't get it till April. So my question is, are you, are you content that our budgeted figure of a million two is still solid as our annual sales revenue? It's, it's 710 now, and we've, we've got, I don't know what the payment was in April, but are we still solid on that million two?
I'll let Liz chime in too, but we, we're probably right where we expected to be, or we'll beat it by a little bit. The number that you're looking at there, the 710,000, that's January, or July through January. We get paid monthly, but two months late.
All right, the state.
So we've got 60% of the revenue in, in the first seven months of the fiscal year. So we, we feel fine on sales tax.
All right, so you're comfortable on that. Okay, good.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? All right, I'll have a motion.
I see Catherine.
Oh, Catherine, sorry. Got the audience at all left, but.
Pardon? I just want to compliment you. This, you know, by having this report, I know I've been dragging on you for quite a while, and it's, I'm pleased with what Liz has put together. It's very nicely done, and it's very, explains well, and I think it's beneficial for the city, you know, for all the residents to have an opportunity to understand the financial situation of the city. So thank you very much for bringing this forward now.
And, and to be jealous.
Pardon?
To be jealous, the other cities.
Most cities.
And there are a lot of them out there that aren't doing too good.
They're, they're, they're not, the report is not quite as complete as this one for other cities. But remember, I complained that other cities were providing more information than what you had been, and I think you've made a real step and a real positive step here. So thank you very much for doing so.
Thank you, Catherine. We appreciate that. Thank you, Liz.
Thank you.
You can sleep well tonight, okay?
Good job.
And we'll take a motion to receive and file the quarterly financial report.
I thought we had that.
We did it on the monthly one.
Yeah. I'll move that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. unanimous. Okay. Let us go to the consent calendar for just a moment. Does any council member wish to pull any item on the consent calendar? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I second.
All right, moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Consent calendar is approved. That can turn over 350 pages. Now we come to 8.1. I would like to thank Carol Moore, Councilmember Moore, for suggesting this. And it was a good suggestion, and we'll ask our city manager to report on the registration requirement.
You're moving along so quickly. I'm still taking notes. All right. So as the mayor alluded to, this item is coming back to the council after having first been discussed in September of 2023, acting on a recommendation made by Councilmember Moore. The city council directed staff to draft an ordinance that would require businesses operating from fixed locations in Laguna Woods to register with the city, while not making that registration requirement mandatory for home-based businesses. So the ordinance that's before you today does exactly that. It would require businesses that operate from what we refer to in the ordinance as fixed commercial locations in Laguna Woods to register with the city on an annual basis. Home-based businesses could voluntarily register, but they would not be required to register. The definition of businesses excludes a couple of types of entities, including nonprofit organizations, tax-exempt under Internal Revenue Code Section 501(c)(3), and government agencies. The registration requirement is really intended as an informational activity. So on one hand, it would provide the city with contact information we don't currently have for our local businesses. It would also, as part of the registration requirement, have them answer some screening questions meant to help staff identify which portions of the Laguna Woods municipal code or state law actually apply to that business. And we've provided some examples in your agenda packet. As proposed, there would be no charge for the registration. The registration would be required annually. We thought about this for a little while and ultimately came up with a recommendation that businesses be required to register within 30 days of each September 1st, or within 30 days of beginning their business, and then subsequently within 30 days of each September 1st. September 1st was selected because it's outside of what would be more of a conventionally busy period for retail businesses. Those businesses might be a little disproportionately impacted in the winter months, for instance, and then most businesses. And then most businesses also have their tax season after the first of the year, so we tried to find a period of time that wasn't going to conflict with anything that might otherwise be pressing on their mind. We would intend on allowing businesses to register either online, by mail, or in person. In the first year, there would be some initial costs for the city to build out the online registration tool. We expect that most businesses would use the online tool, and then subsequently, we could use the same online tool to automate portions of the renewal process. So there'd be a little bit of extra effort the first year, both in terms of doing some outreach to businesses to make sure that they're aware of the requirement, and then developing that online tool. The first year, that effort, a little bit heightened because we don't currently have the contact information for these businesses that we would eventually gain from this registration, so we would be having to do some direct in-person, city-to-business contacts to get everybody registered by September 30th, educate them on the process and so forth. So we acknowledge going into this that the first year, there's probably a larger expenditure of time and effort, and also some costs, direct costs related to the online tool. But after that, it should be, you know, knock on wood, it should be a relatively manageable exercise for the city. We, in your agenda packet, we have some more information on the proposed ordinance, we have the proposed ordinance itself. One of the things that I'll point out, just in terms of some of those screening questions, it will be very helpful to us to have businesses that are sales tax generating provide us with their state sales tax license number. We have access to a lot of that information through a separate online tool that we contract for, but we don't always catch new businesses or businesses that have changed ownership. And there have been situations in the past where a business has operated in Laguna Woods for a good long time, only to find out that that business has been paying sales tax, but it's been going to one of our neighboring cities.
Oh, boy.
This will provide at least an annual opportunity for us to do some internal reconciliation using this information. So for that reason, and for, for many others, that, you know, having contact information is great, being able to communicate changes in state laws and city ordinances to businesses is also great. So I think from the staff perspective, we view this as being ultimately very helpful to us. The, this is agendized as a public hearing today, so once I'm done, there will be an opportunity for the public hearing. After you've received that public testimony, we would recommend that you close the public hearing and then approve the introduction in first reading of an ordinance, read by title with further reading waived, titled An Ordnance of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, adding Chapter 6.03 to Title VI, Businesses of the Laguna Woods Municipal Code pertaining to Business Registration and Determining and Certifying that the Ordinance is Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. I want to thank Mayor Protem Horn for catching a typo that I've identified on the screen there. With that recommendation, we would also like Section 6.03.060, Subsection III, in Exhibit A to Attachment A, to be revised to add the following word. The sentence currently starts, "The city manager may complain and reports." We need to add "file" in between "may" and "complaints." And so with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor for the public hearing.
Thank you. The matter is now open to the public for any comments. Are there any? Yoli, have you received anything?
We do not.
Okay. We will now close the public hearing. And we've had a reading of the ordinance. Do you want to read it again, or is?
Yeah, I would, too.
Let's start over here with Carol and go around.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I believe this was initiated by Councilmember Moore, and I think it's a great idea. I think it's important for the city to know what businesses we have here in a formalized way, not just for tax purposes, although that's important, that we get the sales tax that belongs to us, because I always encourage people to shop locally so that we can take those monies and use them for programs that benefit our residents. And I'm pleased that this also includes the opportunity for home-based businesses to register if they want to, because I know we have hundreds of home-based businesses in Laguna Woods. We have massage therapists and CPAs and jewelry makers and Mary Kay consultants and all kinds of people. And I would be really interested in knowing if there's a service or a product that I need, if I can acquire it from my neighbors or elsewhere here in the city. And so I encourage, once this goes into effect, I encourage our local home-based businesses to, to register themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
I, I think, I do see it as a very valuable thing in gathering information, and it's not, we're not taxing, and that's the whole point here, that all we're doing is wanting to know who's in the city, and I think your communicating with them is going to be good, too. You have, you'll have their email address, so you, even though there's some time spent on this, I think you might save in the long run, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Yeah, I would like to know about how much it's going to cost the city, because I think some, other cities charge a small nominal fee at least once a year to register, and I don't see where $25 or something would be. I mean, we're talking about $7,500 and sending code enforcement to find a, I, just to recover our costs, not to make any money, but I think that should be a valuable thing.
Yeah, I mean, we could, so we could definitely calculate our reasonable cost for service, much like we do building permit fees. We could come up with what this will cost us, both on an ongoing basis, and then recognizing there's maybe more of a cost in the first year. And then I think Councilmember Moore's comment, there, there is likely to be, I don't know how we would quantify it, I'm thinking out loud to a certain extent here, but we'd have to think about, there would be some, at least nominal, cost savings in the future based on kind of a assumed reduction in the number of in-person code enforcement visits. But I could definitely, we're still working on our annual fee study update. I could definitely, as part of that analysis, calculate our costs, so you can at least see what those are. And then with that information, if you wanted to consider either now or at some point in the future, charging a fee, you could base it on that. But we can certainly do the analysis and tell you, okay, based on the cost that we know we're going to have for this program, here's what that's likely to be on an annual basis.
You have mentioned a saving, that's why I can't get a saving, and then say, but we want-
Yeah, we, we would have to, we would have to consider the fact that there's, there is definitely a saving, so we would have to, yeah, we'd have to figure out how to calculate it. I guess what I'm saying is, we, I, I hear the comment, we can definitely do the analysis and come up with a way to quantify some reasonable amount of anticipated savings to kind of write down that cost, and then you see what you're left with, and if it's something you wanted to establish a fee for, you could do that in the future. But we can do the analysis and at least give you some data to look at, if that's amenable with everybody.
Any other questions? On, on Shari's, it says here, the proposed ordinance would require businesses operating from fixed commercial locations in the city of Laguna Woods. Now, we're talking about the village. We're not talking about the village in that language.
That there are no fixed commercial locations inside the village. They would be home-based businesses that could, but would not be required to register.
All right, if, if it's not be required, that's fine, because if you're going to put a fee on anyone that registers, nobody in the village is going to want to register. And so I don't know, I don't know what it's going to cost us, and certainly make a study of that, but this is really for our convenience. It's not a, it's a cost that we willingly want to assume because of the other reasons that it's important to have these things. So I don't know that I'm really entranced about going to the study of the cost and what we'd use it for. I really would be opposed to that.
I have to join that. If you commented that, that we will not be having to physically go to a business now. Every time you go to that, you have a person, a human, you'd have to add those up and see how much do those cost. If you have an offset, if it's a huge offset, I mean, we can't, we're not, we have to be sensible, but if you're saving money, you're spending money, but you're also saving, and they become a wash, then you don't do it. I think anytime you add something like this and then look to, and gain money, you actually insult our businesses, because they'll say, there they go, and the people who do business at home will not want to register, because they'll say, no, the more they know, the more they're going to come back to us and ask us for money. So I, I guess we're, we're gaining, are we winning something in this? If this isn't a positive, then we shouldn't do it. But we're the only city that doesn't know this, the businesses in our city, so that would be foolish to not know. We, we should know. Every, every, I looked it up. I went through the cities to look who had, and they did, some charged nothing, some did have a nominal fee.
I, I think, I mean, it definitely is a net positive for us. I, I do believe that there is a significant benefit from the business registration ordinance. I think maybe a, a middle ground, because I know there's some, some interest in looking at the cost, maybe some lack of interest in looking at the cost. We could also, after the, kind of, after this program gets off the ground and we get through the unusual initial one-time lift, we could also come back and just do an informational report to you on how that process went and how the information's being used, and then at that point, you could direct us to either look at the cost analysis or not, but maybe we could revisit this in, you know, six months after we started or something.
All right.
Now, we, ready to- We're to-
Pass that.
Close the public hearing? Did we close the public hearing?
You've already closed.
We did, okay. Sorry. Thank you.
And I neglected to call on you.
I move we approve the introduction in first reading of this ordinance.
All right, that's right, thank you.
My second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed?
Aye.
All right, you'll bring it back in a month from now?
Yes, the second reading is scheduled for the meeting on June 26th.
Thank you. All right, let us go now to-
8.2, Accessory Dwelling Unit Regulations.
Let me just look at my list here.
This is a very brief report. We, the city's required, well, the general plan housing element and state law both contain requirements that the city enforces related to accessory dwelling units, and that includes both accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units. We have a need to update our existing regulations to comply with the latest and greatest state law. We had anticipated having that information ready for you today. We don't, and so we'd like to continue this public hearing. What that would mean is that you would open the public hearing, you'd provide the public, anybody who wanted to provide testimony could, but then continue the public hearing to the adjourned regular meeting of the city council on June 26, 2024, at 2:00 PM at Laguna Woods City Hall, 24264 El Toro Road, Laguna Woods, California, 92637. At that June 26th meeting, we would have the full agenda report, we'd provide a verbal staff report, we'd also have the draft of the proposed changes to the municipal code in your agenda packet. We just simply don't have those today, so we're essentially asking for a little bit more time on this, but there is, by virtue of how the process works, an opportunity for the public to comment or provide testimony today if they would like to.
Have a motion to continue to-
Before you do that, we need to open the public hearing?
I guess we go ahead and open the public hearing.
So you wanted, hold on.
You, you open the public hearing, provide an opportunity for public testimony.
Oh, oh, gosh.
Catherine, I cannot look everywhere at once.
Oh, well, just be glad, we're, we're getting tired.
Catherine, you should not be concerned.
Well, the reason I'm, the reason I am concerned, I know that it doesn't really apply to our city, because we're a private community. Okay? And as long as, you know, because we don't have any residents or any situations where this could be applied, because the, any, any, within the community, and we're all private in the walls, but it encourages people to say, hey, because we're already, already within the village, had somebody come forward and wanted to have an accessory, you know, accessory unit, taken the garage and converting it for somebody to have, you know, what this, what this thing even classifies as being available. Now, because they don't own the garage, because it's still, you know, that's, that's exclusive use prom, common area, but this just raises a flag for people. You know, you've got 17,000 people, and they're saying, wow, hey, maybe we can have a accessory unit, and start putting some pressure then on the, on the village to make some changes. And we want to be careful, because, yeah, they'd have to change the CCNRs, and they'd have to change a lot of the, you know, the trust and everything, but you never know what's going to happen going forward, and I sure don't want us to be encouraging something that just in order for us to follow what the law requires us to do because of the general plan or whatever, yet it isn't practical, and for our situation, doesn't, but it, it just raises an issue that if somebody took us to court, I don't know how we defend ourselves, or could we? And what, what kind of legal situations do we cause and create then for the community? That's my concern. I can see this, one of these things becoming a battle, because, hey, you've got an ordinance that says, you've got a, you, you know, it can be provided, and here you are over here saying, you, you can't do it.
All right.
I think the way-
All right, we're going to, Chris is going to listen to what you said.
The very simple response to that. Oh, am I not responding?
I figured you would.
I knew it, just a minute.
Okay.
Cynthia wants to say something.
But maybe preempting, Chris. But first of all, this is a state law, and to address, to address the housing shortage, and we are compelled to bring our own city documents into compliance. That's number one. Number two, as you've noted, the right to decide whether or not to build an accessory dwelling unit belongs to the property owner. All this does is say the city can't throw up barriers to prevent that from happening. We can't enforce zoning ordinances or whatever, land use plans or anything else to prevent it from happening. So that means the city takes a hands-off position, and it's going to be up to the HOA, which owns the property. It's up to you guys to control your residents.
Well, thanks.
I think that did it. That was it.
I'm good.
Is that a long-winded report on what you wanted to say?
That's fine, yes.
I think we got it.
We got it.
Okay.
So you'll leave the-
All right, Catherine, you're allowed only one more time at the mic, okay?
You'll leave the public hearing open, and then we would ask for a motion and a vote on number four on the screen there.
Does he have to close the public hearing?
No, we're not closing the public hearing.
Oh, because we're going to carry it over. Sorry, sorry.
I move we continue the public hearing to the adjourned regular meeting.
I second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Councilmember Horn had stepped out for a moment. Unanimous with that exception. All right, we come now to nine, city council business. Now, this is not a public hearing, as I understand it, is that correct?
It's not a public hearing, but there will be an opportunity for public comment.
Okay, all right. Chris, would you, how do you want to handle this? You want to do one, 9.1 and two together, or do you want to take them individually?
We'll do 9.1. 9.1 has a very lengthy recommended action, but I'm comfortable if the council wants to vote on all three of those at the same time, you definitely can.
Just one vote.
Yeah, so, and then we'll treat 9.2 as a separate item. So, and I, I don't have an extensive presentation- So, and I, I don't have an extensive presentation on this today largely because we've been talking throughout the year, now that we're doing quarterly updates on the capital improvement program, much of what's in your agenda report, we've already talked about, this is just making it official. But for the viewing audience, the, the council adopts an 11-year capital improvement program every other year as a part of the city's two-year budget. And then at the intervening years, you're required to re-adopt a capital improvement program in order to continue to receive Measure M2 OC GO funds. Those are proceeds from the half-cent countywide sales, or countywide sales tax for transportation purposes. For the purpose of today's presentation, I'm going to focus primarily on things that have a fiscal impact on the upcoming fiscal year, starting July 1st. There are other changes that we've outlined in the agenda report, lots of additional information in there, and I'm happy to talk about any of that if you would like as well. There are really five things that impact next year's budget. The first is the upcoming annual pavement management plan project. As we talked about in March, when the city council approved the new pavement management plan for 2024 through 2034, the location of the 2425 project was modified. We are making that change official today in the recommended action. And with that, there's an additional $200,000 that the city will receive in state monies specifically for this project. There's a lengthy name there, but it's coronavirus-related money that the California Transportation Commission is providing to the city. We are, as part of our recommendation today, recommending that you appropriate that $200,000 award for the 2425 pavement management plan project, and that you also reduce the appropriations in the road maintenance and rehabilitation program fund by $131,795, the net result of which will be a total project budget of $264,000 for that next year's pavement project. This is westbound El Toro Road between Caia Corta and the city's western city limit. So it's kind of right between gate 10, or gate nine, and the water district's lift station down at Aliso Creek Road.
Oh.
Going west, yeah. And the second thing that'll have an impact, although in a different way, we had talked previously about deferring the design of the transit shelter and street furniture replacement project to 2420, or I'm sorry, to 2526. This won't actually result in a reduction in appropriations. We have appropriated at previous meetings the entirety of the American Rescue Plan Act monies received from the federal government. This would simply unallocate 75,000 of those appropriations, making them available for other projects. That would reduce the project budget to $0. We would plan to reconsider this during the next two-year budget process, which would be a year from now. At that point, there won't be American Rescue Plan Act dollars available to spend. That'll be past the obligation deadline, so we would anticipate that this project would then be funded using capital projects fund dollars, which of course are general fund transfers. The third item, we are on phase four of a multi-phase refurbishment and safety project here at city hall. The fourth phase of the project includes some window and door replacements, it includes improvements to lighting within the building, and also some exiting improvements, particularly from the second floor stairwell on the El Toro side. There are some heating, ventilation, and air conditioning improvements in this room, though the heat and air conditioning was working well today. I believe the council remembers that it full-on didn't work for a period of time. The project includes replacing the air conditioning units for this room and rebalancing them so that we don't have to contend with the inability to really effectively repair the existing HVAC system. That's only for this room and the audiovisual room. We have completed design on this project. When we adopted the current budget for the project, it was prior to the completion of design documents and construction drawings. We are currently out to bid on the project. We anticipate that the project budget, including design and construction, will total about 600,000, requiring an additional 350,000 from the general fund to transfer into the capital projects fund in order to allow us to move forward with construction. We continue to view this project as the final piece of the incremental work that we've been doing at city hall prior to the long-awaited and much overdue renovation of the office space downstairs. That would be phase five. The fourth fiscal impact on next year's budget is the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project. Phase one is near the end of construction, that's the bio swale on Molten Parkway, just south of the self-storage driveway. Phase two includes the construction of a modular wetland system unit on El Toro Road. This is on westbound El Toro, near Woods End Wilderness Preserve. That project also now complete, or phase one is near completion. Phase two, the design is complete. We are also out to bid on this project. We are anticipating requiring an additional $100,000 to construct phase two. The phase one and phase two budget taken together is $514,592 after that additional $100,000 in allocations from the American Rescue Plan Act dollars. This will be the last piece of the work required to satisfy the city's obligations under state stormwater laws related to the previous expansion and reconfiguration of Molten Parkway. And then the last project, this is really good news. If you recall, last year, the city joined with the city of Laguna Hills on a joint grant application to the Orange County Transportation Authority for competitive Measure M2 OC GO dollars to make a variety of improvements to both cities' traffic signals and traffic signal coordination technology. For the city of Laguna Woods, this includes signals between, or signals on El Toro Road between Pasadena Valencia and Molten Parkway, and then on Molten Parkway between El Toro Road and Santa Maria. The Orange County Transportation Authority awarded just under $1.4 million towards this project. That 1.4 million, part of that is Laguna Hills, part of that is Laguna Woods. Our cost share in the project is 20% of the overall costs related to Laguna Woods, which we anticipate being about a little under $110,000 for the 20% cost share. So we are recommending as part of your, the resolution in front of you today, that you increase appropriations in the general fund to make a transfer to the capital projects fund in that amount of $109,946. And that would be our total project budget for it. Laguna Hills will act as the lead agency on this project, so they'll be appropriating a much larger amount for the expenditures coming and going. We're simply going to be writing a check to Laguna Hills for our share of the improvements. And with that, and I'm going to ask you to bear with me, this recommended action is very, very long. There are three parts to it, spread over four slides here. The first recommendation is that the city council adopt a new chapter 8.0, City Capital Projects, for the fiscal year's 2023-25 budget and work plan, reflecting projects completed, changes in the scope, timing, cost, and/or funding of projects, and other amendments. Second recommendation is that the city council adopt a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Amending and Adopting the Fiscal Year's 2023-25 Budget and Work Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-24, Commencing July 1, 2023, and Ending June 30, 2024, and Fiscal Year 2024-25, Commencing July 1, 2024, and Ending June 30, 2025, Increasing General Fund and Capital Projects Fund Appropriations for the City Hall Refurbishment and Safety Project Phase Four, Reallocating Existing Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program Fund Appropriations to the Pavement Management Plan Project Westbound El Toro Road Between Caia Corta and City Limits, Increasing State of California Grants Fund Appropriations for the Pavement Management Plan Project Westbound El Toro Road Between Caia Corta and City Limits for an Award of Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act of 2021 Non-Stip Program Funding, Decreasing Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program Fund Appropriations for the Pavement Management Plan Project Westbound El Toro Road Between Caia Corta and City Limits, Unallocating Existing Federal Grants Fund American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Appropriations for the Transit Shelter and Street Furniture Replacement Project, Increasing the Allocation of Existing Federal Grants Fund American Rescue Plan Act Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds Appropriations to the El Toro Road and Molten Parkway Water Quality Treatment Project, and Increasing General Fund and Capital Projects Fund Appropriations for the Pasadena Valencia-Molten Parkway Confluence Bypass Corridor Project. And then the third recommendation is to adopt a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Adopting a New 11-Year Capital Improvement Program for Fiscal Years 2023-24 through 2033-34," in conformance with Measure M2 OC GO requirements and applicable city policies and discretion. Having said all of that, there's an opportunity for public comments, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Is there any public comment that you'll leave that was contacted by?
You have one more resolution?
That's a separate item.
All right. Public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
Microphone only because there's a viewing audience at home.
You're going to have to come to every meeting, you know that, don't you?
I've been roped in, dragooned, but I'd happily do that. We lived at UCLA and near a place where there was a nexus of buses. Really, we could stand at the corner and there'd be eight of them going to so many destinations. We sold our Prius, we lived happily on public transportation, we loved it. We could get to Light Rail, go to Santa Monica, we could go out to the heart of Los Angeles, we could go to Pasadena, we could use our tap card anywhere along the line with reduced rates for senior citizens. It was wonderful. And it was a big disappointment and letdown when we came to Orange County. And so when I see up here, I'm not sure you were reducing the rate for providing cover and other things for bus stops and things like that. I would like to encourage the city council to really take to heart the desire of many people and the convenience and the savings for us to have improved public transportation and convenient places to sit shaded from the sun while waiting for buses. So that's just a heartfelt appeal and public, yay, public transportation, it's the way to go, really. You save a lot of money.
I think you might make.
Do you know that slogan? Take the bus and leave the driving to us? Remember that?
Right.
It's a wonderful way to go. It really is. You relax and let them drive.
You want to comment on that?
I can, I can share a couple of comments on the, so the references to the transit shelter and street furniture replacement project. If you look around the city, there are the green bus shelters, some have benches, trashcans, covers. Those shelters are currently provided to the city by way of a franchise agreement that we expect will end in, I don't have it directly in front of me, but I believe it's 2027. And so that project is planning for what the city does with those shelters and street furniture after the franchise agreement ends, which very likely involves the city constructing shelters of its own. So I think your point is well-taken. Exactly what you're looking for, shaded places to await public transit, is what that project involves. The only reason we're deferring it, based on existing workloads, those green shelters will be out there through 2027, so we have a little bit of wiggle room in when we do our design work on it. But it won't, it won't have any negative impact, the deferral on the use of those existing bus shelters.
Thank you for sharing that thought.
Thank you.
Any comments from the council?
Yeah, I just have a question for you two. Have you been taking the, the buses within the village?
I haven't yet figured out the schedule well enough to coincide with a transportation means, and it looks to me like they're out of phase with the things I want to do and the time I want to take. And also, if I bring, I can't carry, we walk a lot actually, but I cannot carry a heavy load for very long, so I would want to be able to purchase groceries, maybe a couple of sacks full of them, you know, and, and I would like to be able to ride public transportation from that point right to near my door. There is a bus stop near my door, but I'll be darned if I see the bus going there very often. And so more frequent service so that it's reliable, and you know you can go out there and if you miss that one, well, okay, it's another 10-minute, 15-minute wait. That's what we had in, in Westwood in Los Angeles.
Did you live, excuse me, did you live off Hill Guard?
Sorry, sorry?
Where did you live in West LA?
Where did you live? Was it on Hill Guard where the entrance to UCLA, where the buses?
Within, within 200 paces of the UCLA campus on Westwood.
Of going in, yeah. I remember those days.
It was fantastic, really. It's paradise. We, when we see a bus go by, our hearts beat and we think, we think, that's an adventure. Where are they going? We would like to be there and.
And now you want them to stop and pick you up, don't you? Yeah.
One did. One day they were.
They're right?
Yeah, they were testing their electric bus. I looked at it coming down the street, and I saw, hey, that's their electric bus. So I got out in the street and I waved the guy to stop. He did. We got on the bus. He was very proud of this machine, and we were quite excited. So that was an instance where, yeah, we waved it down and.
Thank you.
It was fun.
Good. Cynthia, you ready?
I have lived in San Francisco, where I was a, very much a public transportation user. I just wanted to suggest to you guys that you consider a golf cart, which can be electric and you pay a fee to the village of like $155 to cover your charging for a year. And we are very proud of our network of golf cart paths because you can get pretty much anywhere within our city on a golf cart path. You don't have to, we don't, we don't want you riding in the street. And you can get to the grocery stores, to Aldi's here, and to mothers, and to.
Staters.
Staters, yeah. And the pharmacies and all the restaurants and so forth. So it works well for me, especially now that summer's coming, and I suggest you check it out.
Thank you. All right, any comments? Anything else?
Quick one. I was in Phoenix just a week ago, less than a week ago, and the Waymo is fully operational in Phoenix and in, what's that place? Chandler. And I saw their cars all over the place, so, and I, well, let's go, we better move on.
All right.
Something else to think about.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second.
Do we have all of them?
Need a motion?
I'll give the four recommended actions.
Three recommended.
The three. I second.
All right. In the absence of Councilmember Horn, who has had to leave, let's vote now. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Four, zero. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Stick around, we're almost through. All right. Let me see, where were we?
Road Repair and Accountability Act?
Yeah.
This, this next item, and yes, this would ordinarily be something that is on the consent calendar, but because we had changes to the capital program sequentially, it needed to be on the agenda. Every year, the city is required to submit a project list to the California Transportation Commission indicating how we plan to spend our Senate Bill 1 monies. That is, those are the funds that we account for in our Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Program Fund. So this resolution simply identifies next year's pavement management plan project, which as a result of your most recent vote, is now official. That's the westbound El Toro Road between Caia Corta and the city limits. The recommendation's consistent with your capital improvement program, and staff's recommendation is that you adopt a resolution titled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Laguna Woods, California, Adopting a List of Fiscal Year 2024-25 Projects Proposed to Receive Funding from the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017's Local Streets and Roads Funding Program, Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Account, as Required by California Streets and Highways Code Section 2034, Subsection A, Subsection 1, and Making Related Authorizations." There's an opportunity for public comment as well. There's an opportunity for public comment as well, and then council consideration.
All right. Yoli, any word there? And no contact. Nobody in the audience want to? All right. The public comment is closed and we'll now consider the resolution as written as prepared by our city manager.
She moved. Five seconds.
What?
Yep, yep, you heard it.
And I'm in favor.
I think we might as well. I think we're all in agreement here.
I left about 20 minutes ago, and this is a hollow shell that is sitting here, and I've been able to control from wherever I am the movement of my mouse.
And yet she was still here, so.
What did you say to me?
This motion has, the resolution has been moved and seconded.
Has it?
I think you should call for a.
Yep, yep, has been.
All right. I was just saying, Sherri, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, four to zero.
All right. We are getting to the finish line, I promise.
All right, this is the scheduled nine, three. We are at nine, three, aren't we?
We are at nine, three. So I would like to ask if the city council is agreeable to it, that we schedule an adjourned regular meeting for the first week of June. I have two potential dates for you. The alternative is a very long meeting at the end of June, which would be a replay of today. I would like to suggest either Wednesday, June 5th, which is the first Wednesday of the month, or I know two council members have a conflict in the morning, but the afternoon of June 6th, which is the Thursday of that week. We can be flexible on staff's side, but I guess, I think June 5th is the day that has fewer known objections or known conflicts to me. Does anybody have a conflict, say?
At what time are you saying?
Maybe in the afternoon on June 5th.
Morning or afternoon works for me.
Yeah, afternoon works for me.
Okay. Mayor Hatch?
That's the one you sent us an email on?
No.
No? Okay.
Do you have anything on the first Wednesday of the month?
No.
I thought that was, the fifth is the first.
Yeah, I'm just asking if you had anything. Okay, if, if you're agreeable to that, then, and I'm going to look to the city attorney, you're good? Okay. So can we, yeah, the motion would be to schedule an adjourned regular meeting of the city council to be held on June 5th, 2024, at 2:00 PM at Laguna Woods City Hall, 24264 El Toro Road, Laguna Woods, California, 92637.
I moved that.
Perfect.
Meeting, but I also am asking that we move forward the reports to this today, to that meeting, and not go through the.
Committee reports?
Yes.
Bulletproof on Monday, June 5th.
We would do them June 5th and not today. So the meeting, would that work for you?
The only, that is definitely the council's discretion on that, but the only thing that I'll mention is that there is a California Government Code section that says you're to report at the next regular meeting of the council for meetings that you receive a stipend or compensation for, so you don't need to do it for every meeting here, but I would encourage the fire authority report, the vector control report, the TCA report, and then the report on the Medal of Valor Awards luncheon.
Why, why can't that one go to the fifth?
There, we paid for tickets for, do we need to?
Funds.
I would say just to be safe, maybe we add that one to it, so there'd only be four. But either way, there's a motion on the floor for the June 5th meeting.
I moved it, and only the stipend, people who receive a stipend give a report, other reports will be at the June 5th meeting.
Yeah, I don't know if that needs to be a part of the recommendation. You can just skip the reports that you don't want to give. But if the motion was to schedule that adjourned regular meeting on June 5th, we have the motion on the floor. We would need a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay.
You want to vote now? All in favor?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Four to nothing.
And then with that, we'd move on to the committee reports, and if we're skipping the ones that don't have stipends, the first report would be the fire authority.
Fire Authority, very briefly, we are looking at the process, we're going through the process of evaluating the performance of the fire chief for the year 2023, and it'll be an interesting exercise because we have so many new members on that council, and I'll report later how he fared. I think he should fare very well. I do. That's all.
All right. The second report would be the Mosquito and Vector Control District, Mayor Protam Horn let me know, she knew she might have to leave early today, that Vector Control hasn't met since the last meeting, so she had no report.
Okay. That'll be me next, then. The toll roads, the transportation corridor agencies. We are now in our budget process. Our revenues are increasing as we get more and more trips. They're increasing faster than our expenses. That's always a good thing. Our toll operations costs increase with increased usage. We have more transactions, more violations, more processing, more phone calls, more credit card fees, but they are all within control. The toll roads has a policy of increasing the tolls by 2% every year, which makes our bondholders very happy because it's all very predictable, and it keeps our riders happy because we don't go a long time with one toll and then raise it by a dollar all at once. About 80% of our riders are occasional riders who go once or twice a month, and their toll increase is somewhere between 3 cents and 9 cents, depending on what road they use. Only 2% of our riders are commuters who go to back and forth five days a week, and their average increase with this 2% is about $5 a month. The result of this, this fiscal prudence is that the toll roads are in a very strong financial state, and we have just entered a contract with the San Bernardino Transportation Corridor Agency, which is the 91 toll roads, 91 toll lanes. And we will be doing their toll processing using our back-office infrastructure, and they will run all their tolls through us, and we will, I don't know, make a penny on each transaction or something. And.
It'd help your balance sheet.
Yeah. It'll help our balance sheet, and it'll do it at less cost to San Bernardino than if they had to build out their own infrastructure and hire their own people. So it is a win-win. And, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't get that kind of cooperation and respect if we weren't financially sound. So that's a good thing. That's it.
Thank you. All right.
And then the last one would be the sheriff's advisory council's Medal of Valor luncheon.
Yeah, can't wait.
It was a great event.
That was the one we were just going to be safe on.
How did you, how was it for you? Did you enjoy it, Captain?
Absolutely. Anytime we can highlight our staff, it's a beautiful event, and like I said, it's well-deserved. And we recognize every day they do courageous valiant acts, and this is a good opportunity to highlight the most visible ones. We appreciate your attendance.
We, he hosted our table, and he was a great host, and it was a marvelous event. I had not been to one before, but it is one that, that you tingled, and you're grateful for what the sheriffs do in this community of ours. So it was, Chris, how did you enjoy it?
A very nice event. Like the chief said, it's a nice opportunity to recognize good work done by first responders in the community.
And there's such a variety of things. They saved lives, they pulled people out of burning houses, they pulled them out of cars, and it's amazing, the fire authority doesn't own a monopoly on that particular issue. Thank you.
I, I just want to make one quick one on that. Did you want to say anything on it? Go ahead, and then I'll follow.
Thank you. I just want to say, this was the second event that I attended. I attended last year, and I'm just really proud to be able to support our law enforcement in everything that they do.
I thought the same thing. I think there were two things that come out. I love the stories. They're really very interesting to see what happens in that kind of a job, and I think I was really impressed with the teamwork, too. I can see how you must enjoy being a part of that team.
And they, well, I was impressed with.
We're proud of you.
One other thing, and that's how many female sheriffs there are in this county of ours. They're really.
Is that right?
An integral part of our safety. It was very comforting. Okay. Thank you both for coming, and this meeting is adjourned.
Wait, wait, wait.
Not quite, not quite.
I just wanted to make a comment based on that, which is the Medal of Valor, and I just wanted to reiterate the fact that today is the second year anniversary for the Geneva Presbyterian shooting. So speaking on Medal of Valor and heroes, I just want to keep in mind and remember the doctor who was a hero to all of us in that incident, Dr. John Chang, and the five victims that sustained a wound and injury, to remember them as heroes because they were able to save lots of lives, so.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Reminding us.
Thanks, Captain. It's now 5 o'clock. Let's go home.
Does that mean we're adjourned?
Yes.
We're adjourned to our special meeting.
You're adjourned to the adjourned regular meeting on June 5th.
Yeah, we're not adjourned, yeah, right. Thank you.
That's the June 5th meeting, the adjourned regular meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. Thank you, everyone.
See you all.